Ready Penny?
Sir.
Okay. Good morning everyone, we are in session here for Thursday, April the 6th. Any items from the public? If there aren't any, can I have approval of the agenda if there's no modifications or changes?
Motion to approve the agenda for Thursday, April 6th, 2023.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Any questions for Tracy on a purchase order? Nothing there? Internal budget revisions and encumbrance requests?
Yes sir, we have no internal budget revision request, but we are to be the point of our fiscal year where we'll start seeing some encumbrance requests and we'll send out a notice to department heads and electives notifying them when the last day for encumbrances are, but this is the first one for the current fiscal year and it's from Gary Wine, the Deputy County Administrator. We, and it's in this year's budget, we are requesting the council's permission to encumber forty-three thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and one cent out of the county IT budget. This is for the purchase and outfitting of thirteen upgrades to the Porpoorade Berkeley Fire. So our intent was to do half this year and half next year, so we're actually going to do thirteen this year and nine next years. They've been ordered under state contract, we just don't know whether they will be delivered prior to July 1st.
Very good. Anything else?
No sir, that's the only one I have.
Okay, well we have a change in status, a new hire recommendation received from Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections for, is it Liam McKee? Okay, as a drug screening tech and with an annual salary of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars effective April the 11th, 2023. New hire recommendation received from Penny Schul's office, Administrator, County Council for Chad Thompson, as a grant coordinator with the annual salary of forty-six thousand effective April the 24th, 2023. Letter of resignation received from Prosecuting Attorney's Office for John Lehman effective April the 7th, 2023, and a letter of resignation received from the Day Report Center for Eric Knoxinger. Okay, so far so good. Effective March 30th, 2023. They have the approval of the amendments, approval of the amendments. Councilperson Barnhart was not here, can I have a motion to get those approved?
I make a motion to approve the March 23rd council meeting minutes.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed? Any extensions?
I'd like to stay.
Okay.
Because I wasn't here.
Due to absence.
I was somewhere else. I'm present.
I don't blame you. You was in a good place, weren't you?
I'm always in a good place.
Yeah, well, your mind is full of those, so. You're lucky to have that. Alrighty, today, we are here April the 6th at 9:30 for the meeting, so we don't need May yet. Boarding Commission's calendars, is that the next thing up? We are here today, nothing on the calendar for today or tomorrow. I think Monday, we have two o'clock LEPC, 5:00 PM Water District, 6:00 PM Farm Land Protection and 6:00 PM Airport Authority. On the 11th at two, we have Central Dispatch, 911 Advisory Board. On the 12th, we have 9:30 AM Development Authority and 6:30 PM Roundhouse Authority. And on the 13th Thursday, or 6:30, we have 6:00 PM Fire Board. Any other boards or commissions?
Mr. President, just as a reminder, the council will be meeting on Tuesday, the 18th, just so you have it on your calendars to lay the levy.
Okay.
We have got approval of the levy document from the State Auditor's office, so this will be the final last step.
Yeah, that's just a.
For your 23, 24, you'll be in and out of here in ten minutes. No one has voiced any opposition to the proposed budget and we did do the Class 1 D-Go ads, so everything's in order.
Sounds good.
Also, I'm scheduled to be on the radio that morning at nine, which I think that's when we'll convene. I think our time was for nine.
Yes.
Perhaps we could get maybe a department head or somebody to fill that slot.
See if we can find someone, Tracy, for R and R on Tuesday, the 18th.
Zal will not be here.
He will not be here.
Correct.
Okay. We've made the Boarding Commission calendars, that's all read ahead there. How about, we have a bond reduction for Cardinal Points, Section 1, Phase 2, lots 161 to 165, lots 178 to 181, and 274 to 305. Final plat file number 048-18 tied to, file number 2211-341 and 2211-344. Bond numbers 100516015, Engineering Department makes that request. Bond reduction for Cardinal Point, Section 1, Phase 4, lots 358 through 371 and lots 396 through 407. Final plat file number 048-18 tied to, file number 2011-338 and 2011-341 and number 2011-346. Bond number is 100542341, Engineering Department makes that request. And then have a bond reduction, Cardinal Point, Section 1, Phase 3, lots 342 to 357, 804 to 419, I'm sorry, 408 to 419. Final plat file 048-18 tied to, 2010-276, 2211-341 and 2211-345. Bond number 100531502, Engineering Department's for that request. Bond reduction, Middle Creek, Phase 3, final plat, file number 027-15 tied to, 2203-0292 and 2203-094. Letter of credit is, number is 5391214-5, and Engineering Department makes that request. Have a bond reduction for Berkeley Ridge, Section 2, Phase 1, lots 278 through 317 and 400 through 425. Final plat file number 2108-309 tied to, file number 2302-059 and file number 2302-061, bond numbers 100619033, Engineering Department makes that request. And we have a bond reduction, Berkeley Ridge, Section 2, Phase 2, lots 318 to 399. Final plat, file number, file number 2202-041 tied to, 2302-059 and 2302-062. Bond number 100644204, and the Engineering Department's for that request. And one last one here, which is a bond reduction, Cardinal Point, Section 1, Phase 5, lots 10 through 42, 65 through 70, 95 through 97, 166 through 177, 182 through 185, 272 and 273, 304 to 308. And final plat file 048-18 tied to, file number 2011-352, number 2211-341 and file number 2211-347 and bond number 100557838. Engineering Department makes that request. Any questions for Doug on those?
Yeah, just a clarification. Remaining items include placement of surface course payment, certification, set profit corners, and an area reduction for NOT from W, West Virginia DEP. What's NOT?
What's NOT?
Yeah.
Notice of termination. The first probably you get when you start construction, the DEP, the FPD has given it as NLI, which is Notice of Intent. It includes a Notice of Intent, it's a Notice of Termination. And that's the main reason why these are all, they're all ready, but they can't get in. DEP won't come out through the NOT inspection until the weather warms up to the day and see if it rains, so that's holding things up for the night.
Pretty warm out there today.
Hopefully the plant's running.
That's, yeah. They're laying asphalt in Inwood, so that plant's running.
That's impossible right now.
Yeah. Alrighty, motion to approve the consent agenda.
I so moved to approve the consent agenda for April 6th, 2023.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Correction of assessment logs, appointment of assessment application, deconsolidation, nothing was provided by the assessments office this week, so we're good to go. And here we go with board and meeting reports. HD?
I didn't have any boards to report from. Did participate in the meeting the day before yesterday. Steve was there as well with American Water and many of the delegates and senators. It was an informative meeting sort of, with some good information. They want to get involved with us like they're involved with Jefferson County, but it's something that everybody will have to take a listen to and hear for themselves. They had some good points, but there's some drawbacks and they didn't answer all our questions, so I guess we'll talk to them some more further and see where that goes.
Yeah, I think that was the same group that came in here about a year or so ago, wasn't it? Given a presentation.
They gave a formal presentation to the council.
Yeah, so.
The only system they have in working time to do is, I don't know what, they didn't say they had anything.
Yeah, I don't think that's, that's not them. They are taking it with Jefferson County.
That's Herb Snyder's.
Not Herb, Lee.
Lee.
Yeah. Well, Jefferson Utilities was bowled out. Jefferson Utilities was bowled out.
Well, he's so bad, but I don't know if he included that.
I thought it was all Jefferson Utilities.
I don't know.
Lee Snyder was actually at the meeting as well. Jefferson County is the first county up in this eastern part of the state today.
They want to establish an eastern bay, ain't no so bad. And the people really, I don't think, have a clue what it means to their rates.
Right, right.
But that's, you know, hey, that's a pressure.
Well, say one thing that they offer, that we don't offer currently is for people who need assistance or seniors who have fixed budgets, D H H R programs provide 20% discount for those people through their programs. I don't know if that's something we can look at for our Burke County water or not.
Well, it's something you can grab from the board.
Right, because that is something that they brought, that was interesting, because you know, Mr. Keith in the last meeting brought up that even with the proposed raises we have now, it doesn't fit his budget. With their program, you would be able to apply for a discount through D H H R. I don't know how we go about getting that added to what we currently have for Burke County water, but it would be a bad idea to look at.
I would have to go through the-
Yeah, through the board.
Board, yeah.
Yeah, the other thing was interesting during that meeting, while we're talking about it, they don't have a reduced rate for commercial or industry. They pay the same as the residents' rate, so that wouldn't go over too well, to say the least.
I think Procter Gamer with a million dollars, a million gallons a day would do.
So, but they have the same rate for everybody. But we did get a good meal out of it. And the good thing was all the, there was a bunch of delegates there, Charlie Trump was there, spent a lot of time beating up on them about what they can do to help us. It was worth, it was worth being there. Plus, we got a great meal, too, didn't we, H D?
Where was it at? It was gonna be at Bricks.
Oh, good, okay.
Very good.
Don't judge going there for the food.
There you go. I'm gonna start calling you Barnhart.
Anything, Mr. Barnhart, tell us about your, oh, anything else from H D?
No, I don't have anything else to report.
Yeah, I was going for two meetings, but the only meeting I had this week was a personnel committee meeting for Region 9. Helped by Zoom and covered several items, but last week at the Board of Health meeting, the state of West Virginia has filled the district sanitarian position at the district office with the Morgan County sanitarian, who was employed, of course, through Berkeley Morgan Health Department. I do not know him, I don't know anything about him, but-
Have a name?
No, I couldn't even tell you his name. And he was, I was under the impression he was hired as their inspector, in other words, inspecting jails and the commercial food places and maybe the milk sanitarian. But I was informed at the meeting, he was also acting much as Richard Wheeler did, and that he would go to, of course, the eight or nine counties that the district office covers and act as an intermediary for problems with sewage or water or food or, you know, whatever sanitarian had. So he would act as another person to look at problem septic systems.
So, so if there was a, an appeal given at the Berkeley Morgan sanitation, would that be like another step?
Well, it would be another step, but it'd be another person.
To appeal to?
Yeah, well, to look at.
Look at, okay.
To confer with. I don't know if he knows anything about septic systems, but if he worked in Morgan County, he would surely know problem sites.
Would it, would it be beneficial for Berkeley Morgan and even most health departments throughout the state to have, it would be, being that we do both medical and sanitarian, would it be beneficial to have not two different boards, but two different appealing locations? You know, one for sanitarians, you know, to have an appeal board to go to, that would involve certified installers as well as a couple members of a sanitarian. Has that, has that ever been?
No, never been.
Okay. Was that Glenn? They kept that as long as I asked.
No, Glenn is now stationed in Morgan County. So it wasn't Glenn that got the job.
Okay.
It's, I couldn't even tell you the guy's name.
Okay. Was it from our office?
Yeah.
Jacob?
No, no. This guy was stationed in Morgan County.
Oh, okay.
And I, you know, I never dealt with him, never met him, so I have no idea.
Okay, be nice to meet him.
Yeah. Okay. Eddie?
The other thing I had, sir, was a planning commission on Monday, which, there were several public hearings. The one in particular was Foley Springs, which was for a waiver for parking, which has been addressed, I think, in the new ordinance. But actually, their waiver request made more sense to me once it was explained to us by Laura. They're taking vehicles off the street parking and putting them on the property of the home. Because I'm thinking, why? Right out the gate, are we asking for a waiver when you have a blank slate, 211 acres, and right out the gate, you're asking for a waiver? That just sat with me wrong. But the way that our current ordinance is written, it would have put this car, cars on the site or on the streets instead of-
In the driveway.
In the driveway.
Is this single family or townhouses?
There'll be a mix of villas, townhomes, and single family, and probably rental storage space more than likely. But, but once it was explained to me, then I was, I was okay with it. And the other thing is, Steve and I met with the sheriff, prosecutor, the chief deputy, two additional deputies on this property, neighbors' concerns off of Nestle Quarry Road. We've met with them to hear their concerns. The sheriff's office personnel have met with the property owner and the person who's renting the property to discuss some of these and try to get some resolution where everybody can enjoy the properties. So, but other than that, that's, that's what we got here.
Okay, thank you, Eddie. Steve?
Yeah, and on that meeting, I was appreciative of the fact that the sheriff's office had like five people there. Katie was there on a Sunday afternoon, and I appreciated her being there. I think they can get it resolved that they put the heat on. I think the sheriff's office can put a little heat on the situation because I do understand their concerns, how annoying it is, and it's just not a good situation, so. Also, last Thursday after our meeting, I didn't think I'd be able to attend my first workforce reach the seven meeting, but our meeting got over, so I was able to Zoom it. Even though the meeting was here in Martinsburg, I didn't have time to get over there. Then I wasn't smart enough to get my picture off the Zoom, so the mayor kept texting me that he's tired of seeing my face on the screen up there, everybody was watching, so I had to be careful how I behaved because I was on live.
Live streaming?
Yeah, so that was a struggle, but, but they do, they do some good stuff. Their whole purpose is to get people back into workforce, and they provide funding to, to businesses or even to organizations. When I was at Parks Direct, we used several people, and you, they pay their income for a certain amount of months or so days. We even did it with kids in the summer, we had a program with the youth, and it was very beneficial. And then, of course, the hope is, is that they subsidize it for so long, three months or something, and then the employer will end up maybe hiring those people, get them back into workforce. But, and then Tuesday I had a sewer board and store board meetings. I went there early to talk to Curtis and Greg and the board members and told them I had to leave for the meeting that we had at Bricks. But I asked them if there are any updates that the council needed to be aware of from their meeting that they were getting ready to have Tuesday, and there was not, so everything business is usually there, so. But, but again, back to Tuesday night with the delegates and all, we had a lot of time to sit and talk with them and talk about the past session, where we need to go in the future, and I thought it was well worth our time to be there, and I enjoyed it very much. I sat next to Charlie Trump the whole meal, and we had some great conversation, and I just, we gotta keep counting them about how much help we need here. Yeah, the whole rest of the meeting with the water thing was about the growth, you know, and everybody, it's all positive, positive, but then we're left with how to figure out how to build the infrastructure to take care of it, and that's our dilemma here. And we're a different animal than the rest of the state, to say the least, but that's all I have.
They did mention that may have a better possibility to get a consumption tax than the 1% sales tax.
Yeah. And I'm not gonna give up on the 1%.
No, no, I mean, they seemed like they were gonna try for it this year, too, so.
Eddie and I were just talking about that this morning. You know, if we could convince them, I mean, not to increase the sales tax for the county or anything, but if they would just give us back one cent of what they're already charging.
Collecting either way.
Let us, even any county.
Right.
You know, and I guarantee you that would be put to so much better use than-
Well, Harvey was there, and of course, John gets fired up, you know how John is. I'll tell you what, John goes down to Charleston, he fights for us, he really does.
He does.
And, you know, the first proposal the Senate had, instead of reducing, if, if the first proposal the Senate came back with, when the House passed the reduction of the personal income tax, was to do the whole 50% the first year, but add a 2% sales tax across the state. And of course, John's thought was, well, if they do that, then we need to give a penny or a half a penny back to the counties then. Of course, it didn't go anywhere, but still, at least he was thinking in that mentality that, you know, and what you're saying, if they give percentages of the 6% would be nice, but I really think we have a shot in the future, and I may be overly optimistic that we can get some help and we can maybe get the penny here. And it doesn't have to be optional, and it can be optional for the rest of the counties in the state, if they don't want to do it, fine, but we gotta keep counting it. And my whole theory behind it now is that we could actually show them in writing the things we could reduce and the things that we don't have to propose to increase in the future, that we would actually be saving our residents' money as opposed to charging them more.
Right.
And we can show that, and we can do that, and it would save, people with fixed incomes would actually end up saving money because we have no choice but to keep raising fees if we don't get any help from jobs. And who's gonna pay it? Everybody in Berkeley County.
That's the short story.
Whereas with the sales tax, everybody that visits here is paying it along with the residents.
Yep, sir. Non-resident sales.
And it's just, it's just, it seems like it's too easy to understand it, why we can't get it passed, but we gotta keep counting it.
Yes, sir. Anything else? I actually did not have any meetings this week, but there is, looks like we have a reappointment packet for Mary Jane Reiner for the Berkeley Morgan Health. Her term expires May the 2nd, 2023. Any action you want to do there?
No, not this week. If somebody has another applicant, you know, you'll see it, but I'll hold off some out of it.
Appreciate that, okay. Eddie, this is, this is your call here for honorary council. Miss, Miss-
Ella, you wanna say?
Ellie?
I, Ella Waters.
Do you swear in a firm?
Do you swear in a firm?
That I will uphold the Constitution.
That I will uphold the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
That I will work hard.
That I will work hard.
To fulfill the responsibilities.
To fulfill the responsibilities.
Of the Office of Honorary Counselor.
The Office of Honorary Counselor.
To which I've been appointed.
To which I've been appointed. So, thank you.
Tell folks about what school you go to and what you're involved in and what your future may hold for us.
All right, so, like I said, I'm Ella Waters, I'm a junior at Hedgesville High School. I've grown up in the Hedgesville area my whole life, as have my parents. I could go into the long list of all the clubs and extracurriculars I'm involved in, but I won't do that for you, but most things in leadership. I actually started a leadership club at Hedgesville High School last year, and that has been the most successful thing I've probably ever done, growing other leaders through service. So it's kind of a leadership through service. We do a service project every month. We're actually doing one tomorrow in Times Square, and it's just such a rewarding experience to kind of have started that and be president and see other leaders grow. And in the future, ever since sixth grade, I've been watching the West Virginia Legislature, and I've been paging, and I've been in Charleston just as much as I can be. So my goal since sixth grade has been to be a West Virginia senator. I would love to work for the state and do something in law. I'd love my senior year and going into college to do something with political science and maybe get a law degree and come back here. I wouldn't love to go to college here, but we'll see how that works, but I'd love to come back and serve the state of West Virginia, whether that be, you know, doing something like this here in Martinsburg or in Charleston. I like to call it my favorite place in the world, I love Charleston. But we'll see, we'll see where that takes you, but I would love to do something in law, so, in the future. So you could see that and potentially vote for me, I would appreciate that.
Hey, you got seven votes sitting here if you get to 1% sales tax.
Okay, awesome, I can do.
I tell you what, with your leadership skills, I bet you she could, she could probably form a student body lobbying group to go to Charleston to lobby for your students. Well, we would probably love that, too, and the school board would love that. I don't know what made me think of that.
Mr. Kelsman Barnhart and I can attest you're the best school in Berkeley County. We appreciate that, we understand where you're coming from.
Of course, we went to the old.
Okay, that was the middle school.
Yes.
Yes.
So we're not gonna hold anything against it, being that these two guys are here, but, you know, Penny, we gotta get a Musman, Martinsburg and Musman in your same. What was that?
I forgot, H Stevens had hit. Three of us, three out of five.
We're outnumbered. I got it.
They're friends, we're cool.
And if there's anything that we're talking about, that you have an idea that you would like to interject, please get Penny's intention or mind, and let us know what you're thinking.
And your intro is pretty impressive.
Yes, thank you.
You really do like Charleston, West Virginia.
I do, I love it.
Really?
Yes, yeah, so I actually-
What's your favorite thing about it?
Oh, the Capitol.
The Capitol, of course, yeah.
So I'm in the, so the chapter, I started at Hedgesville High School, it was called the Youth Leadership Association, and we do model United Nations at the University of Charleston, so I just did that last month. And then at the end of this month, we do youth in government, so we take over the Capitol, so to speak, and I'm actually in the executive branch. I'm the Secretary of Education for the state of West Virginia this year for that program, and I'm actually running for West Virginia Youth Governor for my senior year, and I'm really excited about that. It's, the organization itself, the Youth Leadership Association, I love, and just being able to be in Charleston, and I wrote a piece of legislation for it last year. It's, I just love government, so I can't, I could talk about it for hours, but yeah. Well, feel, feel free to interject any time.
Please. I feel like I need to move over there and her sit here.
Very impressive.
Yes, indeed. Thank you very much, Ella. Like I said, anything that you want to interject in, please do, don't hesitate. And we'll get a picture here, we go on break, and we'll get a picture here for, for the county site, and we'll go from there. Thank you. And the councilperson issue would be me. I know we discussed, I don't know if you guys were here at the time, a county flag, a representation of a county flag. We have a few designs. Matt had, was it Hedgesville or School? James Rumsey, come on up, Matt, kind of enlighten us a little bit and bring us up to date on it.
Well, thank you all. I, per the direction of the request of the president, now president, we worked on a project in partnership with James Rumsey Technical Institute, which also involved, they also developed our logo, one of the students there for the commemoration last year. So we went back to them and engaged the students there to develop possible flag designs. It was a lot of back and forth and a lot of input from the committee members that were part of the commemoration in developing the flag design. They came back with a recommendation. I don't have it in my hand at this moment, this morning, but I did share it with you all, and didn't know what the feeling was, whether you wanted further design revisions or maybe you had a change of heart about it, I don't know. So I didn't know what, what the direction-
Not that I've had a change of heart, it's just been a little bit busy, but it's not one of the forefronts.
No, it's not, obviously hot on your agenda, there's a lot of more important things to do than this.
But if we can get a couple of copy designs to the members, and then we'll, we'll look over them, and, you know, invoke your ideas, and if you like them, then we'll pick one, and we'll get the flags for the county offices.
I did share, but I can recirculate that to make sure everybody has what the recommendation was, and then maybe there's a few other, there was a couple other final iterations that you all consider as well, or if you want some adjustments to one of the final versions.
So the council-
So, the council understands, once you adopt a county flag, it's not only for the county offices, it's countywide.
Yeah.
So, it would be on the flag poles of our buildings and some other things. What I would recommend is that if, if you so choose to move forward, it would, we'd put it on your agenda for public discussion, and, and then you can decide how you want to go.
Sounds good.
So, is this a creation, or is this a recreation of something that's current?
There's currently not a county flag.
Okay, I didn't think so, because I'm not saying.
No, there's currently not a flag.
Okay, yep, that's just the thought.
So, I will just circulate the designs that we go down to, to everyone, and we'll go from there.
Sounds good, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
All righty, takes care of that. In that 10:10, we, my gosh, we're almost right on schedule here, we have Tracy Gilliam, grants administrator, FY23, BJA, STOP, School Violence Grant. Motion to approve when you're done.
Before you is the Stop School Violence Program. It's a 36-month grant, it runs October 1st, 2023, to 9/30/2026, $1 million, no matches required. The background is the BJA Students, Teachers, and Officers Preventing Stop, Stop School Violence Grant Program is designed to improve K-12 school security by providing students and teachers with the tools they need to recognize, respond quickly, and prevent acts of violence and ensure a positive school climate. The program abstract, Berkeley County Council, Berkeley County, West Virginia, is applying for a category two in the amount of $1 million. The Stop School Violence Program will provide an opportunity for Berkeley County to support those most vulnerable in the community to the school violence, the children and the teachers. Working in partnership with the Berkeley County Board of Education, Martinsburg Initiative, hosted by the Berkeley County Sheriff's Department, will, A, provide a specialized youth therapist to provide counseling to at-risk youth who are struggling with mental health wellness; B, provide for two school social workers to strengthen social services where at-risk children are, and connect them to community resources; C, provide survivor simulated training on an ongoing basis to law enforcement, teachers, and school personnel; D, supply emergency bailout bags with standard medical kits, communication cards, and window, or windows; and E, begin a pilot assessment training and implementation program for the school resource officers, teachers, and school personnel for training, development, and implementation standards for threat reporting and assessment protocol. The long-term goal of the community is to curtail school violence, supporting all students to lead productive, healthy lives. Berkeley County Board of Education is the largest employer in Berkeley County, employing over 3,000 teachers and school personnel. School-aged children in Berkeley County comprise 15.29% of the total population, which equals 19,278 pupils. Having the ability to provide streamlined training, not only for the law enforcement, but for the teachers and all school, school personnel on a continuous basis, will allow for a comprehensive, systematic approach to the school violence crisis. Berkeley County's program will reach beyond the student population and connect families to community resources to support individuals who are at risk with mental illness and substance use disorder, reducing the number of school violence situations. Effective training for school resource officers, county law enforcement, teachers, and school personnel on a continual basis, with standardized threat reporting assessment protocols, behavioral characteristics of at-risk, high-risk students, de-escalation, conflict resolution, and prevention decision point techniques will be effective and have an impact across school disciplinary action, learning to offer assistance and de-escalate situations before they become volatile. Therefore, the hiring of two full-time social workers in the school system and a youth therapist will guarantee effectiveness and have an impact across school disciplinary actions, the new juvenile drug court, and existing juvenile and adult programs. The grant funding will pay for the following. In years one, two, and three, the salary for the catalyst therapist, which is the current position not covered by a grant, in the amount of $198,189. Three active shooter bailout bags for $165. Simulated virtual training system for $181,500. Years one, two, and three, three trainings at the National Association of School Resource Officers for four SROs, registration, travel, hotel, and meals. Years one, two, and three, sub-grantee Berkeley County Board of Education, the Martinsburg Initiative, for two school social workers, salary and fringe, for $390,000. Years one and two, the National Police Institute, for $213,600, I'm sorry, $267. Years two and three, attendance at the required national conference for BJA for grantees, which is $1,388 for your student grades.
Okay, heard the information given when it comes to the BJA Stop School Violence Program. Have a motion to approve?
I make that motion to approve, there's nothing more important in our country right now than this issue, so.
Yes, it is. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have a further discussion?
Who, these social workers and all that, who, who do they be included by? Us?
Berkeley County School.
Berkeley County School.
We have one social worker now that is employed, and we, they, they bill us through the COSAP grant.
And, but there's, there's no money in there for overtime for the training, for the nine SROs, I'm sorry, for four SOs.
The school resource officers, the training is in, I think that one was there, it's in Pennsylvania, and there shouldn't be any overtime with that, they're going through the day, and it's, it's eight to five, an eight-hour lunch break, so there shouldn't be any overtime.
Tracy, is this a new grant, or is this?
This is a new grant, we applied for it last year.
Yeah, okay.
And I spoke with DHS, and they reviewed it, and they wanted a couple of things, and they said, can you supply resumes for your lead people? And I'm like, okay, we can, we can do that. And I went back and looked at the notice of funding, and it didn't require, but they wanted, so, we made that adjustment, and an adjustment, they wanted an example if we could really handle a grant like this. And I thought my explanation was good, but I added to it, and said, yeah, here's the specific.
I don't think there's any grant that that, your office or this county could not handle.
Yeah, obviously, they don't know your all skill set, or our determination to be able to keep our children safe, you know, between, between the sheriff and the, and the Martinsburg City Police, and the state, West Virginia State Troopers, I, I know that you're committed to provide safe environments, and with the therapists that are included here, mental health is absolutely on the rise, and those struggles exist within the schools today that, that they're currently not in position to take care of, so, I'm, I agree with Steve, I don't think there's anything more important that, that we could discuss that would be more important than the safety of our children. You know, this, this week at South Middle School, we had a bomb threat on Monday, and the kids were out over at the football field for an hour and a half, the week before, and that corset student, actually, the threat was from a student that was expelled, and then the week before, they expelled two students for inappropriate, you know, conversation about, and, and maybe with people like this in place, that could have been preventative, that those kids would have got attention from somebody before.
Escalate.
They went to that level, so, any, any money we can get, we appreciate towards this, it's, it's obviously a national issue. And you know, sometimes the attention that the national media gives it, though, it kinda works in reverse, because then there's kids that are borderline, kids are sitting there thinking, well, this is how I could make a name for myself, you know, and that, but I, I don't know what we can do about that part of it, but it's a real concern, though, and everybody that says it, says that you never think it's gonna happen here, but, you know, someday, unfortunately, it could. We appreciate your efforts to get this moving.
You hate to think this way, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, and I, I hope it's never a when, you know. Okay, we've got a first and a second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And now we have a MOU, Board of Education, FY23, BJA Stop School Violence, so we've got this MOU in here, that, do I need to sign, I guess? Yep.
And this was approved by the legal department. Would you like me to read it?
It ties into.
I was gonna say.
So, as long as legal has signed off on it, if the council could approve it, and give the council president the authority to sign, I think that's all you can do.
Mr. President, I'm due to approve a memo of understanding between Berkeley County Council, soon to be Berkeley County Commission, I hope, and the Berkeley County Board of Education, for reference to the BJA Fiscal Year 23 Stop School Violence Program Grant, and authorize the President of the Council to sign the MOU.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. All righty. Next up is Mr. Will Lawrence, our fiduciary, the state hearings, 19, did I read that right?
That is correct, Council. For approval, for our honorary council person, and for all three people watching, I'm on. We, Council actually, or soon to be commissioned, as the partner says, has first crack of estate in oil's business. That obviously upheld jurisdiction in circuit court, and so on. So, getting on to the approvals for the month of April, as in Council's read ahead, there are 19 estates proposed for settlement this month, and all estates are identical to those in your packet. All estates therein have been published in the Martinsburg Journal as prescribed by West Virginia law. All estates have reported either that all creditors have claimed, that have claimed debts against the estate in accordance with West Virginia law have been satisfied, or that there are insufficient funds to pay said creditors, and the estates are insolvent. Lastly, all estates therein have been legally or actually, legally or actually noticed to the interested parties indicating their pending settlement status, and to date, no objections have been received by my office. With that, providing no interested party here this morning objects, I ask that this council consider the 19 estates for interim and/or final settlements for the month of April 2023 as provided.
Only 19?
Yeah, so, this is a direct example of what the small estates law has done. Small estates do not require, as, as I've mentioned before, to this council, do not require settlements. What that process entails, and I honestly, I think two of every three estates that are open in the state qualify under small estates, is $50,000 or less in tangible property, bank accounts, vehicles, that kind of thing, and $100,000 or less in real property, real estate, that kind of thing. Most estates qualify for that contingency, and if you do, so long as you're an heir or beneficiary under a will, you can qualify and file a small estate affidavit listing those assets and their estimated values as being required amounts, and you file that affidavit, and that's it, you have six months to kind of transfer as, as either the will or intestacy provides. No settlement need be filed. The settlement requirement actually is, is being proposed, and we talked about the state legislature earlier, it's about to be changed, publication requirements for, for even classic estates are about to be nullified, so, short-form settlements where everybody agrees that we're ready to settle this thing, I don't need to see, you know, itemized bills of what the estate has done, and what it hasn't done, and what I'm going to get. For those estates where people are saying, we're, we're good, the legislature is proposing that we don't need to publish those estates. Reason for that is, everybody's on the same page, why would we need to give them legal notice again? As I say, just the 19 estates for the April 2023.
Now, before you took this job, did you have any knowledge of the system of fiduciary?
Mm-hmm, sure, yeah, in law school, wills and estates, it's not a required course, but you should take it, so, you're gonna learn about that pretty soon, sooner probably than I did, anyway, from what I hear.
You spat out this stuff like you've always known it.
Well, it's, again.
I don't know if it's true or not.
I have a great, great poker face, Mr. Lawrence.
He was doing it appropriately.
Will does wills.
He's a lawyer, when he doesn't know, he makes up.
That's correct, that's correct, be confident, that's what they all teach you in law school.
And that's how I got through school, I didn't know squat, but you just sound like you know what you're talking about.
There you go.
And everybody falls on.
Again, poker face.
So, any other questions for Will? If not, motion to approve the estates, 19 estates?
Some move. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And I'll be down to see, I got some paperwork.
I continue to hear nothing but good things about your department, Will, and I've yet to have anybody tell me that you had a problem down there, so appreciate what you do.
That's, that's what we want, it's a difficult time for everybody who comes down there, and that's what we want.
Yep, indeed, all righty, let's see, no estate hearings to?
Oh, I've got, after our break, I think, I have.
We don't have any to schedule for next month, but Will's gonna make up for it this month.
That is correct, as Council noticed, I had no estate hearings last month, and today I make up for that back.
Very good. If you take up two-thirds of the agenda.
I sure do, my name is sprinkled all throughout this agenda.
All righty.
I don't know if you want to move ahead to my two items, and get it out of the way.
Yeah, we'll do that.
We can do it, knock it out pretty quick.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
As the councils aware, Senate Bill 649, as sponsored by Senators Blair, Trump, Rucker, and Barrett, passed on March the 9th, 2023, and becomes effective 90 days from that passing, which would be June the 9th, 2023, and it deals with the name change from the Berkeley County Council to Berkeley County Commission. The law is, the, as amended, the bill is amended, is, is pretty straightforward, it gives the Berkeley County Council, by a majority vote of the council, the ability to adopt a resolution that solely changes its name back to the Berkeley County Council. The resolution shall not constitute a reformation, alteration, or modification of the form of county government. Upon changing your name, you still retain the same powers, duties, and responsibilities that you have now. It does not affect or alter the number of council members, commissioners that are currently seated, or the terms of its members. The bill does require that at least 30 days prior to consideration of the resolution, which again, would be no later than June the 9th. The council shall give notice of the proposed change by publication of the intent to change its name in each weekly newspaper as a Class II legal advertisement, in compliance with West Virginia Code 59x3x1. What I'm asking the council today is, is the consensus of the council to change your title from council to commission? I need to know that so that I can work with Anthony to get the resolution done, and then we'll have to do the Class II legal notice, which means that the legal notice has to be published twice within 30 days of your consideration of the name change. So, all I'm asking is, is the consensus of the council, do you want to go back to county commission?
If you want my opinion, hell yeah, hell yeah.
There's one, mine's absolutely.
Two, three?
Yes.
Four?
I have, have a question, I asked Alan this once before, but I'll ask him in open sessions, everybody here, what's the cost involved?
You know, there's going to be, you know, some cost of letterhead and business cards and things like that, but the county seal does not change, you know, other than some, some letters and signage, the, the cost will be minimal.
And one thing I noticed when I looked over the bill, if another county wanted to, the, the bill refers to Berkeley County, changing our name back to commission, but if another county wanted to go to five, or seven, or, you know, how many commissioners, do they become a council, or do they go?
No, because Jefferson County has had five.
Well, they were before.
I know, but they've been commissioned all along.
Yeah, but we had to go to council.
Because we didn't have zoning. Because we didn't have zoning.
Is that correct?
Well, it does have to do with zoning. That was fifteen years ago, so the legislature put in a way to reform trying to develop structures. If you went for more, it had to be called a county council. That's still codified.
Yeah, so if...
So that would still occur some...
So if Colin wanted to go to four or six, they'd be a county council?
Yes, this is just a piece of special legislation applied only to this body.
Yeah, why didn't they fix the...
That was what the original bill was, but there were certain concerns with somebody down there about...
To make us feel special, yeah.
It's always going to be a constitutional amendment otherwise, I think, is what they kept saying.
It didn't need to be a constitutional amendment. Some people down there may get a huge...
Yeah.
So there was just this direct piece of legislation that the county council has to support.
Answer me this, was it a special constitutional amendment for us to become a council?
Yeah.
There you go.
But Jim, now that the precedent's been set, now that the council could do the same thing and probably get it approved easier than we were able to.
I was going to say, they could be a council one day and turn right back around and be a commission the next.
Does that mean we need to run the ads about May ninth to take effect June ninth?
Within thirty days prior to the earliest date of May ninth. Now, May ninth is a Friday, so what I'll do is I'll put on the council's agenda, the current council's agenda for June the fifteenth, so that you can take a formal vote with the recommendation that it becomes a council July first.
Okay, so did you want that as a motion, or just a consensus?
Just consensus of the council.
No, we're not yet.
Okay. You had a consensus.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't go down that road unless you were... I knew what you wanted, but I wanted to formally...
I think we already got off that exit ramp, and we are going down that road.
There you go, okay. We'll take care of it. I'll work with Anthony. Thank you.
And thank God the exit ramps will be well lit.
Yeah, except for Tabor Station, but be careful there.
The other matter for your consideration, and we discussed this last Friday when Jim was in here from the Water District, has to do with the test well that the council has informally approved to be drilled on a site proposed at the Inwood Park. I have provided you with all the information that the Water District, as well as their groundwater investigators, Emery and Garrett, have provided. All this is a request for them to access the property to drill the test well with the understanding that should the test well prove productive, and they want to move forward with the use of that well, that they would come back to you. So you had indicated last week that it was okay with you, particularly after the explanation of where the test well would be in the parking lot, and it would be under, you know, under the parking lot with access through, you know, through a vault. A vault and a manhole. So what I need is formal approval from the council, and you'll see on page three. It says, "South Berkeley County Water Supply Project, Groundwater Resource." It's either give permission to have the staff of Berkeley Water and Emery and Garrett groundwater investigators to drill a test well on our property, or I do not give my permission. So I need a formal vote on that, and then regardless of how you vote, give the county council president authorization to sign the document.
Well, if the well is not deemed sufficient, will they abandon it or leave it there?
They'll leave it there for the councils if the council decides in the future that you want to, you could use it for something.
Does this have Health Department approval?
I'm not sure they've gone that far yet.
Well, generally, the Health Department does not approve buried well seats. In other words, wells below ground level. And I was just curious.
That would be the Water District and Emery and Garrett's responsibility to make sure that all the regulatory requirements were met.
I was just wondering.
Yeah, I would hate to think that we would have to fight with the Berkeley County Health Department.
Well, it wouldn't be Berkeley County Health Department, neither would the state of West Virginia.
But it had to go through local first before it gets there, I'm sure.
Since this is a commercial well for the district, it would go directly to the state.
Because if this drill site is successful, it will save Berkeley County hundreds of thousands of dollars to put up with a bunch of bureaucracy.
Well, I was just surprised when he said it would be below ground in a vault.
It better just pump into a station.
Yeah, but they generally do not approve well heads that are below ground.
It was actually put below ground, really at our request, so it did not interfere with our parking lot.
Yeah, I realize that, but...
It was going to be in a greener area of a parking lot, and I'm correct in that.
It's on the edge of the parking lot, and if it really became an issue, it could be put above ground and just block off that area. You're talking about losing a spacer.
Yeah, yeah.
As I said, a middle one, so...
Because if it's a vault below ground, it would have to be positively drained to some area, you know, so the vault wouldn't fill up with water.
Right.
And if they can't use it, then we would certainly want to keep it because it could be a source of water for the water pond that we're going to put down.
Irrigation of the lots. It could be used for anything that would involve people like the sprinkler, what do we call it?
Splash pad.
Splash pad, yeah. Could be used for that, but could be used for...
It'd be minimal treatment, it'd still be treated.
It'd have to be treated to be used for splash.
Not for the pond, no.
Okay. You heard all the information? Just their motion.
I make a motion to approve the Water District to move forward with this joint as well.
Second.
And give the president the right to sign the agreement.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. All righty. Yes, sir. And... Will, you want to go ahead? Do you have somebody want to break yet?
You're going to need pictures.
Yeah, we'll take a quick break, get some pictures here.
Will doesn't have anything to do, he doesn't mind hanging.
Council, we're here again with Will Lawrence, the fiduciary supervisor hearing estate for Dallas M. Martin.
Yes, counsel, as the read ahead indicates, I do have several of these. I'll get right into them. Although as a precursor, we had some server issues this morning, thus I wasn't able to print off the orders for the president to sign after consideration. So we'll get those to council's office by, I mean, latest end of business tomorrow and get them on public record just as soon as we can.
Some of you may have noticed problems with your iPads and some other things. We had server updates scheduled for two o'clock last, two o'clock last evening, early this morning, and the server, server went down. So we were aware of it or trying to get everything backed up, but there's issues with some Excel documents and things like that, so.
All right.
Will's just not making it up.
We were all worried about that, I'm sure. Moving into the estate hearing for the estate of Dallas M. Martin. On January 23rd, 2023, Mr. Martin passed away, resident of Berkeley County. On February 17th, 2023, Tina Martin, petitioner in this matter, named executrix in the decedent's will and daughter of the decedent, presented my office with a copy of the decedent's will and filed a petition to probate a copy of the will in solemn form for both this council's edification and for our honorary councilperson. Original wills are the only things that can be recorded on public record. It is a rebuttable presumption, but a presumption in West Virginia law that if the original cannot be found, then that is on purpose. The will was destroyed. Again, the council can rebut that presumption. That same day, a hearing was set for today's date and notices were sent to all interested parties, both in the will and the intestate heirs, which all, meaning the will, well, so the will in this case gives probate assets exclusively to the intestate heirs, meaning if the will were not accepted, the exact same thing would happen. The only thing the will does do, however, is it waives Ms. Martin's bond, thus making a huge difference to her whether this copy of the will is probated. To date, no parties have expressed any objections to the copy of the will's acceptance in Berkeley County to my office. With that, I ask for this council's consideration to probate the copy of Dallas M. Martin's will in solemn form in accordance with West Virginia law.
Mr. President, I move to accept the copy of the Dallas M. Martin probated will.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries, sir.
Counsel, next we have the estate of Joan Mitchell Walker. Ms. Walker passed away, a Berkeley County resident, on December 26th, 2022, without direct issue. On February 15th, 2023, my office received a copy of Ms. Walker's will and a petition to probate said copy in solemn form from the decedent's nephew and named executor. The will grants residual beneficiary status to several charities, as well as a few nieces and nephews, executor included. Were the will, were the will to be denied, no bequeathals to said charities would be mandated. Notices were mailed in February regarding this estate's probate and solemn form status, and to date, no interested parties have written objections to my office. With that, I ask for this council's consideration to probate the copy of Joan Mitchell Walker's will in solemn form in accordance with West Virginia law.
Okay, you've heard the information provided. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to, to probate the will in solemn form for Joan M. Walker.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Next, counsel, we have the estate of Andrea Tuelle. I hope I'm pronouncing that correct. Mrs. Tuelle passed away on January 19th, 2023, resident of Berkeley County. On February 24th, 2023, my office received Mrs. Tuelle's will, which seemed to be the original document, but failed to self-prove in that it did not have a self-attesting affidavit, which involves the witnesses swearing to either a notary public or another court officer that the testator, the person whose will it is, at the time of their signing was above the age of 18, knew that they were signing a will, was of sound mind and body, all these different things that self-attesting wills. These wills are called self-proving, meaning that we don't have to go after witnesses after the fact and try and, you know, get them to swear to it later. Typically, to correct this, my office gives out witness, witness depositions where the would-be executor tracks down witnesses presently and has them sign a document swearing to several things, as I mentioned. In this case, the will was authored in August of 2004 by a Baltimore, Maryland, law firm that is no longer in existence. After a good faith search, an alternate executrix and the decedent's daughter, the petitioner in this case, petitioned for this council to accept the will in solemn form despite its unproven status. Notices were mailed to all interested parties, and to date, no objections to this will's acceptance have been received by my office. With that, I ask for this council's consideration to probate the will of Andrea L. Tuelle in solemn form.
Okay, you've heard the information given by fiduciary. Do we have a motion?
I also move the estate of Andrea Tuelle.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Next.
Next, counsel, we have the estate of Virginia Juanita Cross. Ms. Cross passed away August 30th, 2022, a resident of Berkeley County. Similar to Ms. Tuelle, Ms. Cross's will failed to, quote, "self-prove" by a self-attesting affidavit. Unlike Ms. Tuelle, Ms. Cross's will seemingly came from an online service to form her will and was signed before two to three witnesses. It's not very clear. It is definitely signed by two witnesses in accordance with West Virginia law, however. It's just, the witnesses are not necessarily legible, nor are they logistical. Some people put their names as a witness in one place and print their names in another place that should go somewhere else. It's very odd, but the will was signed and witnessed by two parties, which is in accordance with West Virginia law. To make matters worse, the witnesses named in the will were found to be former employees of Cecil Hannah Bank at the time of the will's formation in 2008, but their current whereabouts are purportedly unknown. All interested parties were noticed of this hearing and the executor's petition to probate this will in Berkeley County, and to date, no objection has been filed with my office. With that, I ask for this council's consideration to probate the will of Virginia Juanita Cross in solemn form.
Okay, you've heard fiduciary again with the will of Ms. Cross. Is there a motion?
A motion to probate the estate in solemn form for Virginia Juanita Cross.
Motion. And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries.
Lastly, counsel, this is actually different. This is not a petition for will in solemn form. This is a resignation. We have the estate of Hiloay Michael Tueve. Mr. Tueve passed away December 3rd, 2022, a resident of Berkeley County. Initially, Ms. Diva, a Miss Diva, her relationship to the estate is not quite known, qualified for Ms. Tueve's estate on January 4th, 2023, and was bonded for $12,100. Given that she was not an heir at law for Mr. Tueve, he has a son who is the sole heir at law. Information regarding this estate is spotty, as there is a significant and admitted language barrier with my office and Ms. Diva. Given that language barrier, Ms. Diva has petitioned to resign from her post as the administratrix for the estate of Hiloay Michael Tueve on February 13th, 2023. There may or may not be additional family members who are willing to take Ms. Diva's place as fiduciary of this estate, all of whom will be, of course, required to be similarly bonded for $12,100. Should no, should none choose to come forward to my office, my office will be forced to involve the sheriff's office to finalize this estate. In any event, I ask that this council consider the resignation of Ms. Diva as administratrix for the estate of Hiloay Michael Tueve.
Is this common to accept someone resigning without having someone to take over?
Yes, in, I mean, in more, more instances than a couple, I could say. It's, especially with folks who are not originally from this country, they qualify in their method of understanding. It's really not that complicated of a process, and representing a person's estate, finalizing their taxes, closing out bank accounts, selling real estate, transferring titles to things, is quite a task. And that seems to be the case here.
Well, I have to ask, was, was there any opportunity to get somebody that could Well, I have to ask, was there any opportunity to get somebody that could communicate with them?
Yes, there was. The surety, Amy Lawyer, who serves as Ms. Diva's justification of surety. Just to clarify what that means. What a justification of surety is, is when a person wants to be bonded, there are two ways you can be bonded. One is to go through an insurance company and just take an insurance policy out for the allotted amount. What you can also do is contact, if you're a West Virginia resident, you can get a person who owns West Virginia real estate and basically have them vouch for you. Say, if you abscond with probate assets, the folks left holding nothing, who should have gotten something, can then sue me and my property to recover what was lost. The person who did actually vouch for Ms. Diva does speak English, however, she travels for work. And she has, is also a family member and has voiced interest to, to take over this estate. But again, I don't have that in writing. I don't know that that's particularly what she wants to do. So to answer your question, Mr. Griffin, yes, there are other family members. Without such a language barrier, none of them are local.
Okay, you've heard the, little tongue twisters, there was a Tualay and a Tualve.
It actually came up with Ms. Shewell. I actually thought we had a couple of estate hearings today. I was like, I thought that was scheduled. It was not. Anyway, they are two different estates.
Yeah, okay. All righty, you've heard the information given by fiduciary. What is your pleasure?
I have a motion to accept the request for resignation for the personal representation by Ms. Diva.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, got two of them.
Pick one.
Eddie, I think maybe you should pronounce the first name.
Maxineesia?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. Good thing I didn't have to say it.
That was Tualve, right?
Jose.
Tualve. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries, thank you, sir.
Thank you, counsel.
I'll be down, Will, thank you. All righty, next on the agenda, we have Dean Polk, who's a candidate for Berkeley County Parks and Rec and CBB. Come on up, Dean. It's your time to shine, and you can embarrass your uncle as much as you want. Tell us a little bit about yourself for the ones that don't really know you. I mean, I can probably elaborate a little bit, but I'll leave that up to you.
Thanks for having me. First, put me on your agenda. As Jim kind of said, I am his nephew, but grew up in the area. Graduated a Muslim and went to WVU. Did my sport management undergrad there. Stayed for grad school, also got my master's in sport management and my MBA. After that, moved around a couple of times for different internships, different jobs. I've worked at, right after grad school, I worked at ESPN Wild Water Sports in Disney, down at that complex. Actually, let me back up a little bit. First of all, I was in Morgantown at WVU. I got my, kind of my first taste with the CBB world. I worked for the Morgantown CBB up there, opened their sports and special events people out, which is kind of where, like I said, I first got into, into it. Then I went to Disney, finished Disney, actually did a year-long position with USA Baseball in North Carolina. After that, took a full-time job up in Hershey-Hersburg, Pennsylvania, with the CBB there, Visit Hershey-Hersburg, doing their sports and special events as their business development manager. Was there until the pandemic, when obviously a lot of things got cut. Got another job while I was laid off, working for a consulting company in the CBB world that, as I was mentioning, focuses almost specifically on the sports market. It's a remote company. We're actually based out of Phoenix, Arizona. We've only got about four full-time employees. But it's allowed me to do what I'm doing and move wherever I want to move, and I chose to move back here. So I sold my house in Pennsylvania last August and moved back here and have been just working from home. Again, we do strategic plans, venue feasibility studies, economic impact analysis for different facilities. Again, all mostly focused on the tourism world. So when we look at facilities, it's not necessarily a one or two kind of ball field type facility. It's your, your larger complexes for the most part, you know, minimum of four, eight, twelve fields or courts and facilities like that. Multipurpose facilities, you know, ones that can host basketball, volleyball, pickleball inside, and maybe they have some turf too, that they can host other things as well. So was just telling Jim that, you know, I'm here. I'd love to be able to get involved, help out however I can. I think I've, I've seen a lot of stuff. Again, I travel all over. We do strategic plans with destinations all across the country. You know, from, from a small, as I guess, and I was in Scottsbluff, Nebraska, the far western edge of Nebraska last week. We, the week before that, I was in Grand Rapids, Michigan, second biggest city in the state, and we left from there and went straight to Baton Rouge, Louisiana. So we worked, I've worked, you know, with destinations of all different sizes, all different makeups for their CVBs, whether they're standalone sports commissions or they're part of economic development or part of the city government structure or county government structure. So I think I have a lot of experience in that world, knowing what visitor bureaus are doing across the country, what works well, what doesn't work well, and would just, you know, love to help out however I can.
Thank you, Dean. We'll start with HD, and if he has any questions, he can kind of go from there.
Seem pretty well versed in this. Parks and Rec, if there's any vacancies.
There's currently not.
When do they have something coming up?
I'd have to get with Tracy to see when those terms expire or whatever.
One expires in June, I think. Chip Hensels, I talked to Tracy about it yesterday.
Okay.
Because I know unfortunately we kind of just fill the CVBs, but I think we're well out on one of those. But you seem well versed on sports complex type deals, and I think either or position would fit that criteria.
Yeah, I mean, certainly we work, obviously, as you guys know, the Parks and Rec departments own a lot of facilities everywhere we go, you know. It's rare that there's multiple privately-run facilities that are, that are big in an area. So everywhere we go, you know, with the strategic plans and stuff that we're working with, we're always working kind of hand in hand with, with Parks and Rec, so certainly.
We really like to get a complex here, I believe. I mean, a few of us have talked about it, but, you know, multi-plex, like rich sports type dealings. We have to figure out a way to make it happen, but.
Yeah, and we do, you know, I've, we've done a lot of those. We did the strategic plan in Charleston for their CBB just last year, and they kind of used the basis of our strategic plan to, as the backing for the new complex that they've announced down there. We.
Is that the one that's going to be in the mall?
Yeah, the old mall, it's going to have a pool, I think, an indoor track, there's a lot of stuff. They basically kind of use the basis of our strategic plan for, for the backing, you know, with work there.
Are they doing that with the private sector or are they doing that?
I believe it's a little bit of both, public-private. I haven't dug in too much to all the details of that. Like I said, it kind of came about right as, right after we finished up our report.
It's the folks that took over Gold's out there. One, one, one fit, whatever.
Any other questions? Mr. Barnhart?
I have new questions. You're way above my pay grade and all this stuff.
I don't know about that.
You can give him your condolences for being my nephew.
Well, I was, I was going to ask him, what kind of uncle is Jim? I know him as a person.
He's been pretty great.
Spent a week with him in Cuba, and they always kept him there.
I've heard, I've heard some about that, Jim.
Then they realized, they realized, we don't want to keep him here.
They deported me.
Yeah, shoved him into my, my collection. I brought him home, and, you know, he's been out of control ever since.
Eddie, you got anything?
Dean, it seems like you have a tremendous amount of experience and knowledge in, in these fields. In your opinion, do you think that this area is primed for a?
Complex?
Something bigger and better than we've, we've ever been able to do just because of our location and our continual increase in population?
I, I do. I told you on this all the time. Like I said, every time we go somewhere, I go to a different city. I take pictures of something that seems like today's gym. You know, you mentioned spooky note earlier. I mean, that's, that's, there's nothing like that really anywhere else in the country. I mean, it's the largest tourist complex. There's a few scattered around, you know. I don't know, something of that level. But population-wise and location-wise, I think we are great for, for something that could be very, you know, very impactful to the tourism world and bring those economic dollars. And I certainly think this is an area that should support that.
With, like with the CBB, for example, what, what would be, what would be your thoughts or vision of the involvement of CBB to lift this area up?
Well, I think, obviously, the sports market showed, especially, you know, during the pandemic. We always said, kind of in our industry, that, that sports was kind of immune to a lot of these things. You know, the travel sports industry didn't, didn't really slow down, you know, after nine eleven. It didn't slow down in the economic downturn. The pandemic didn't even slow it down, and a lot of the other markets did, so. You know, I mean, when you have a facility, I, you know, I've seen destinations like Elizabeth Town, Kentucky, that, you know, was definitely smaller than here. And they've put in a, they put in an eight-door, eight-field baseball complex, and they're already looking to expand it. And hotels there are sold out all summer long, and they've had more hotels built. So, I mean, there's certainly cases all across the country where destinations smaller than ours, towns smaller than ours, have used sports to impact that and showed significant improvements. You know, I think there's other markets as well, not just sports. I mean, there's, there's travel and tour, there's, you know, an expansion on leisure. You know, it really just kind of depends on the, the assets that you have, you know, the hotel inventory that you have, the facilities that you have. But, I mean, we have Interstate eighty-one, and, you know, we're close to other areas where people are driving up and down all the time. There's, there's bus operators that pass us by and go to Hershey, and they park and they stay overnight there on their way to New York City or vice versa, head south. There's all kinds of different markets and avenues that, a CBB that is kind of functioning on all those levels is boring.
Oh, thank you for applying, and I think somewhere along the way, we need to find a spot for you.
I'm happy to help however I can.
And, and thanks for moving back here. You know, that says a lot right there alone. I mean, other than family, you know, which I know is important, but, you know, you can move anywhere you want. So it's, it's good you came back home.
I, I told you multiple times, I mean, I love this area. I want to see it, you know, have some of the things that I see in these other destinations. So however I can help out, you know.
Steve?
Yeah, I think you'd be a good fit for either one in Parks and Rec. You know, we've got some facilities now. We just take more advantage of them and use them for the promotion of, because everything in recreation now is going travel. I mean, I don't care what sport it is, it's travel. And our DuPont soccer complex, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but if we could just spend a few million dollars to turf in like those fields, we've already got it, and it's right on eighty-one. I mean, so we need somebody on that park board with the vision to go ahead and, hopefully, the vision here to get the money there to take advantage of the stuff we have, and then hopefully even add to that as well, you know. But the Randy Smith Center has a pickleball tournament right now. There should be a pickleball tournament in there every month, or at least every other weekend, you know.
Oh, it could be.
Oh, it could be, so we'll need that kind of training like you have. Hopefully, we can find a spot for you.
We definitely, like I said, we work with Parks and Rec departments a lot and all of the, the best destinations that, that we come across are the ones where the CBB and Parks and Rec have locked arms, and they're working together because a lot of times both have their own separate master plans along with the school boards and, and other different departments. They all have their own master plans, but they're not always, you know, funded. So when you can work, you know, arm in arm together, you get a lot more done. And that's something we kind of preach in all the projects we work with.
And as far as CBB, we've got to get a mindset there of spending more money to promote this kind of activity.
From what I understand, they're pretty flush.
Right. And we're not there right now, so I think you'd be a good fit for either one. And if you have the time, you could serve on both, maybe it's something.
Yeah.
Question, how much free time do you have outside of your work?
I mean, I, we travel a good bit, but, you know, when it is, it's generally one or two days or two, three days at a time, maybe once a month, maybe every once in a while twice a month. But, I mean, other than that, I mean, I work from home. I can basically kind of make my own schedule.
You're full now, you're full?
I think so, but there may be, there could also be a, a, a city position on that board.
Right.
But what I was thinking is, doesn't Parks and Rec have some paid position?
Paid positions? Well, they do, yeah, but I don't know if he's interested in employment right now.
I guess. I don't know what it is or what the topic of it was.
Is anybody looking for a second job?
You're talking to the wrong person now, I'm not there anymore.
Dean, I'm going to open this up to Ella, and I didn't know if she'd have any questions for you or not, but she's our honorary counsel person today from Hedgesville High School.
Oh, I, I know, just, I have a question, but I just like to add that a lot of the students that I'm around in the school system are active students who also play, are tri-sport athletes and stuff like that. And they're talking about the DuPont fields and other soccer facilities and how we have to go to Virginia and, and around. I know my best friend, every weekend, she's not doing anything academic. She can't be in the clubs that I'm in for that, because she has to go to North Carolina to do anything, a soccer tournament or whatever that may be. So I think definitely making West Virginia a more place and the Eastern Union a more place for tourism through sports is a good idea. And as everyone also said, I think you're very qualified for anything in that kind of field. So you, I would love to see you do something here, not just the sports students, but really anyone who, who could take you.
I think that's an excellent point. The other, other thing that I, I'll say we always try to, try to mention too, along with kind of Parks and Rec locking arms in arms, is that when there's a sports tourism-focused facility that's built in an area, it's not just a place for tourism events, you know, maybe Friday, Saturday, Sunday, but Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. It's a better place for the community kids to play. They're the ones that are going to get it. It's keeping all those people that are going to Virginia and North Carolina here and having them spend their money here instead of, you know, purchasing fields for rent for practices in Winchester and Hagerstown. There's a, there's a huge benefit to that, too. I think that's an excellent point.
The other thing I have is, Dean, and when you've traveled around, do you find that the, the areas that you go to, do they already spend the money for these facilities? Or is it like, if you build it, they will come? Or, you know, you, once you build it, it's pretty much an ideal that it's going to happen?
It depends, some. Some are already spending the money and already well-established, and they're building new facilities because the ones they have are already booked. Some realize the potential, and they're trying to find the funding with different improvement districts and other, you know, ways of funding, whether it's an increase in sales tax.
You mentioned, what type of a, a funding district was it called?
So there's, the big thing now in, in the tourism space is tourism improvement districts, called civitas, that works with states at the state level to get the, the statutes and everything enabled at the state level. And then within that, you know, each individual district or county or city can enact those. They're typically assessments on really anything tourism-driven. Usually, they're on the hotels, and it's really a self- enacted legislative assessment, so that you'd have to get all the hotels on board in the area that you wanted to outline as your improvement district. That's funding that can't be taken by anybody else, so nobody else can kind of dip their hands on it. It's, it's overseen by basically what would be a board put together from the hotels. It's earmarked for improvement, tourism improvement funding. So it could be bricks and mortar, it could be marketing, anything like that. That's a big one now is tourism improvement districts.
What's interesting here is that the park system has fed off of the hotel tax for years and years, and it provides more money to the park system than what our property tax base does in Berkeley County for forty years now. And so the more you fill the hotels up, the more money they get in return, so it's a double whammy there.
Yep.
I would think you would say this, if you made an investment here in Berkeley County on eighty-one, it's a low-risk situation compared to whether you're going to be successful or not compared to some places.
I think so, yeah. I mean, if it's done right, if built right, you know, really the worst thing you can do if you're trying to focus it on tourism is you get to the point where you're trying to build, you know, eight or twelve fields, and the budget's not where you want it. Or, for instance, when I was in Hershey, they were looking at a pool. The community wanted to do the pool. And this was more of a community-focused pool, not necessarily tourism. But they had people lined up that were already saying, if you build this pool like this, we'll fill it up every weekend you want. And it was between a fifty-meter and a twenty-five-meter pool, and they ended up. And they ended up, at some point, and this is a couple of years ago now, I, I left before it was kind of finished, but they decided they didn't have the budget for the fifty meter pool, but they wanted something bigger than twenty five, so they built a thirty meter pool, which didn't really do them any good because thirty meters didn't do anything much more. So as long as you build it, you know, with tourism in mind, if that's your focus and you're right sizing, and again, that's kind of what my company does is, is we come in and we, we can kind of do those feasibility studies and say this, you know, here's what the, the rights holders all across the country want, but here's the size facility they need because they want to be in one place if they can. And here's what you guys need to kind of handle as far as how many kids they need. If it's done right, they, they do well for the country.
That district that you were talking about, is that, is that similar to like a TIP district where the hotels are within that area, their hotel fees would go directly to that building of those facilities, that complex?
Yeah, yeah. So basically you would outline, you know, somebody, and a lot of times it's the C V B president that's kind of leading up this charge and they're working with all the hotels, you know, in the district, kind of how they want to map it. Again, every one of them would have to kind of agree or they would have to vote on it and pass by a certain level. And then they can kind of choose what that assessment is. It could be an extra dollar on every room night, it could be two dollars, it could be one percent, two percent. And then that money's pulled in from the rooms that are generated from that district and used for, again, like I said, bricks and mortar, marketing, really anything tourism driving.
So just, I mean, in our county, right, Parks and Rec and C V B split the hotel motel money anyway, all the hotels. So this would just be extra tax on top of that to go back to those same places or to go to a specific facility?
It, it can be either. It's really up to, like I said, the, how you want to write it in the statutes or whatever you're putting it in. I mean, it's, it's completely flexible as long as you're, you're using it in one way or another for, for tourism activities. But it's up to you to, to say, you know, seventy five percent of it goes to bricks and mortar, you know, new construction or enhancing other older facilities or, you know, only ten percent goes to that and other goes to a grant fund for bringing in events. It's really up to them how they write it for the most part. And there's a group, I can tell you, again, they're called Civitas, C I V I T A S. It's worth looking up on, online if you're, if something worth considering. I don't know, I don't think it's passed on a state level here in West Virginia, but...
Yeah, it, it's probably, if you increase the hotel tax, it would have to be state approved through state legislative and they couldn't do it any other way at this point, unfortunately.
Well, and that's, that's where these people, they come in. There's a guy named John Lambeth, that's, that's the head of Civitas. So he'll work to get that legislation enabled through the state level. And then it's, it's not a raise per se of the state lodging or the, the area lodging tax. It is a separate assessment that the hotels have enacted on their own. So that's, that's why there's a lot more flexibility there.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All righty. Well, as you can see, he excelled far from his uncle and his ability. So I will, I will defer that and shut up right now. But, but Dean, thank you for coming in and I'm sure you'll be hearing from us.
All right. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. All righty, next on the agenda is, we're not here. Brian Costello, right on time. Look at that.
Mr. President, if I may, just again, a little bit of background. If the council will recall, on June thirtieth of twenty twenty two, almost a year ago, you had a public hearing for the purpose of hearing the proposed rate increases for the Berkeley County Emergency Ambulance Authority, which would have been come, which would become effective July first, twenty twenty two. At that time, the council approved the increase, conditioned upon the fact that they go back and look at non residential fee structures and homestead exemption. They first appeared before you on February second, twenty twenty three, Brian and his staff to discuss, and actually it was the final time that they appeared before you with a kind of a final draft of the proposal of, and at the consensus of the council at that time was to move forward. At your direction, we did schedule a public hearing for Thursday, March twenty third, twenty twenty three, which was two weeks ago. Notice of public hearing was placed on the website and our social media platforms. We did do a class one legal notice in the journal, which appeared on Monday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty three. I did provide you two weeks ago with certification publication. For the period, February first through March twenty twenty three, your office was open to receive any oral or written comments on the proposed fee change. We've received none. And as you know, at both public hearings held on the twenty third at ten o'clock a, or I'm sorry, eleven o'clock a.m. and six o'clock p.m., there was no one that came in opposition to speak in opposition or in support of the fee except for Brian. So that's where we're at today. Did you all receive any?
We did have a few phone calls, one from a past president, Mr. Charles Hall, who was dead set against it based on their original purpose when they established fees years ago. And then I did have the opportunity to speak with my predecessor, Mr. Gary Collis. His, the only concern he had was he was questioning if we intended to assess fees for the religious groups at that time. And he actually said, well, what would you charge, you know, building fifty by sixty, three thousand square feet? What would that bill be? I said, based under the current fee, if it goes this way, this is what it would be, like forty five dollars or something, is what we said for the year. That was all that we heard from that point.
Knowing you all personally, not, not since the public hearing before or after the public hearing, your office has not received any communications in support of or opposed to the proposed fee, non residential fee or the homestead exemption. So that brings us here today, hopefully for discussion and action.
Okay. We're at that point then.
I'm ready to make that motion if you're ready.
You're ready for?
This is a discussion.
Make the motion and then we'll open up for discussion.
Move, and we move forward with the non residential fee and the exemption for the homestead exemption for those that qualify for the, the new twenty five dollars and move forward this thing.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I would, I would like to thank you all. When you came before us the last time, we had some comments and questions. You went back to the drawing board as you've done many times throughout this process to try and get this fee structure arranged for non residential structures who have never paid any fee for the AMO service at Berkeley County. And as we continue to grow, the needs of our EMS system will also continue to grow and those take dollars. And instead of going back to the homeowners like we've done since nineteen eighty eight, I am pleased that we've reached this point, that we can now go to commercial industries. Now, I don't want to take advantage of them, but I do feel as if they should be paying their fair share for the impact that they've created and, and they're neighbors to us as well. So I appreciate the work that you all have done. And I know it wasn't easy. If it was easy, it had been done years ago. And as far as Mr. Hall, you know, making his phone call and his comments to you, you know, I, I've known Charlie for quite a while. I respect and appreciate Charlie, but the, the truth is, these other entities need to help pay the way for this service. So thank you for what you've done and I'm, I'm...
And, and I want to add to that, to what's, what I think is great about it is, is that we're going to take in a flow over a half a million dollars a year from the non residential. And that is about seven percent of the, your total budget and that's what we're going to receive from them. So really they're paying for their seven percent of your providing services. We're not abusing the non residential people at all. We're just asking them to pay for the amount that it's costing us to provide that service to them. And I think that's really important, so, so thank you for that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
When do you anticipate starting this?
Good question. We, what we will do now is sit down with county, we've already started, finalize the actual changes to the ordinance. The ordinance will come back in front of you for final approval and signature. We anticipate sending out letters by the end of May to businesses to say that, hey, this is what's occurred. We want to give you a heads up come January of twenty twenty four, you will see this. And then our hope is to start the first building in January of twenty twenty four.
H D? All righty, call for the question. All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed? Motion carried, sir.
Back to work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We tried to make it easy on them.
All righty, that brings us, brings us down... Brings us down to items from the public. Okay, any item from the public? If not, we will go into an executive session. Will there be any action taken?
No, sir, there will be no action taken. However, executive session is requested for...
Real estate?
Economic development and property, potential property acquisition.
Mr. President, I'm moved to go in the executive session for property acquisition and real estate and...
Economic development.
Economic development.
They are in executive session.
We've got to kick you out, sorry.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're out of the executive session. No action to be taken. Mr. Barnhart?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad to be back, kind of, but I'd like to move to recess.
We are in recess. Thank you.